You're setting way too early. Yeah. Of course, Sunny never has to do that. I trust your knowledge. Ready?
Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order Monday, March 11, 2019 at 7:04 PM for open session. We are reconvening from closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken at the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Let's hear it.
Mayor Santenaz.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Garza?
Move that, will you be excused?
Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Juan Garza. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's in-vocation will be led by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Director of Public Safety, Joel Hapman. Please rise.
Okay, let us pray. Let's say, dear Father, again, we thank you for this evening given to us to conduct the business of the city. Father, we thank you dearly for the many blessings you've given to our community. Father, we pray for all those that live, work, and, you know, protect and lead in our city. Father, we pray for peace, comfort, and then also recovery for those suffering from the recent disasters in Alabama. Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance, and then also discernment, as we discuss tonight's business on the agenda. Father, again, you've given us the parts. Again, we just pray that we can put it all together for prosperity and order. Father, we ask this all in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in saying, I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray, and thank you, Joel. First of all, I'd like to recognize the presence of some students from Los Alameda's High School. They're in the back of the chamber. Please wave. All right, very good. Thank you for coming. I hope that you learned something tonight. All right, tonight, we have a good number of presentations. We'll start off with the proclamation of the National Women's History Month, to be followed by the presentation of certificates of appreciation to the members of the Town Center Design Review Committee. But before we move on to that, I'd like to recognize the presence of the following members of the Seroptimus International, who will receive the certificate of proclamation for the National Women's History Month. We have Susan Held as president, members Myra Ochiki, Karen Avery, Dorin Robbins, Laura Ramirez, Christina Funeau, Nancy Prigmore, and Sally Pendleton. So I'd like to invite you to go to the riser for the presentation. Also, I'd like to invite my fellow members, councilmembers, for the presentation. Well, this month is a very special month. We're recognizing the contribution of women to our society, and they are tremendous. As the saying goes, for every successful man, there is a successful woman. So I know that these women here have made these contributions to our society, especially to our community. They're members and officers of the Seroptimus International Bellflower, and they have made significant contributions to our community. So I really want to applaud them for what they have done and what they continue to do for our community. So I will read part of this proclamation. In appreciation, in appreciation, the City of Bellflower proclaims Women's History Month. Whereas, the 2019 theme of the National Women's History Month is Visionary Women, Champions of Peace and Nonviolence. The 2019 National Women's History theme presents the opportunity to honor women who have led efforts to end war, violence, and injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. Whereas, American women have a race, class, and ethnic background, have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in our nation to volunteer services in the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And the American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. American women have a race, class, and ethnic background, serve as leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement and the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and many others, creating a more fair and just society for all. And women have been leading force for social action and a voice for equity and empowerment in Bellflower. And Women's History Month will celebrate the local organizations who work to honor and improve the lives of women in the community, especially the Seroptimus International of Bellflower. So therefore, I, Sunny Arantainas, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as the National Women's History Month. So I'd like to present this certificate to the President of Seroptimus International, Susan Held. Would you like to say something?
On behalf of Bellflower Seroptimus, I would like to say that it is our honor and privilege to be the community service for this wonderful city. We have been here since 1952, and we will continue to do what we can to improve the lives of women and girls and the local community. So thank you very much for this honor and allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Well, our next presentation tonight is, it's a kind of a sad, it's a sad moment, especially, I'm talking about the Town Center Design Review Committee. And as members of the, we're all been members of the planning commission, by the way. So at some point in time, we've also been members of the Town Center Design Review Committee. So over the years, that committee had done a wonderful job in our downtown, but for lack of a better word, it kind of served its purpose. So in 2014, we passed a resolution, a ordinance, basically changing the focus of the Town Center Design Review Committee to focus on developments of vacant land in downtown. And that hasn't happened. So what has happened recently is when we're talking about reappointing and appointing members of this committee, it came to light, when I was calling all the members, it came to light that they have not met for many years. So when we evaluated the purpose of this committee, we came to the conclusion that it had served its purpose, and we are ready to basically wind down its existence. So one of the items in tonight's agenda is to dissolve that committee. So but before we do that, we would like to recognize and honor the current members of that committee. And I'd like to call on Wayne Brown, Bobby Snow, and Chrissy Padilla to receive their certificate. Dan, can I read one of them? This one, they're all the same. Yes. Certificate of recognition to one of the members for outstanding leadership and dedicated service to the City of Bellflower. Your contribution during your tenure on the Town Center Design Review Committee demonstrated your commitment to growth and have created a strong foundation for the city's future. Signed by Sunny Santenaz, Mayor Protem Juan Garza, Councilmember Ray Dunn, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you.
So I'd like to personally thank you on behalf of the City Council and the City of Bellflower for your service to this wonderful committee.
This is just about the easiest committee I've ever been on. It's great to be on a committee that never meets, by the way. And then you get to stand up here and get one of these. This is great. It's a dream come true.
All right, the next presentation is something about a very important event for our city, and it's on the Wall That Heals.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As you know, next week, the Wall That Heals will be coming here to Bellflower, and I'm here to just give a brief presentation on the wall itself, and most importantly, the schedule of activities and events that will be taking place throughout the week next week. The City of Bellflower is the only city in Los Angeles County and one of only 34 locations nationwide that was selected to host this event in 2019. The three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC that travels with a mobile educational center. It'll be on display for 24 hours per day, beginning March 21st through March 24th. It'll close at 3:00 PM on March 24th, and it will be at John S. Sims Park. On Tuesday, the trailer that hauls the Wall That Heals will arrive here in Bellflower. There will be a complete escort with, escorted by the Sheriff's Department Fire and Public Safety Vehicles. We have been in contact with some motorcycle riders and anticipate a few of them joining us as well. The Public Works Department will be transporting our photo and video crew in the back of the city truck to capture the escort from the best visual perspective. And we will also have staff on social media as well for this event. The escort route will, I'm going to show the map here. So we're going to start at Thompson Park, and it'll tour around the perimeter of the city. And these maps are available to the public on our website, along with the flyer, and we also have several here that they can pick up. But this will be the route that the trailer will take throughout the city, going around, being escorted by police and fire. And it'll go at a very slow pace throughout the city, and then it'll arrive at Sims Park around 4:40, between 4:40 and 5:00 PM. Overnight schedule, overnight security will be scheduled at the facility beginning Tuesday night throughout the week.
PJ, before you go to the next day, on Tuesday, what are we doing to kind of promote this? It's kind of too bad that it's kind of late in the day. I wish it would have been earlier, so that the schools can, I mean, the children can get out of school and at least see it as it goes by the street. Especially, I think it's going to go by Ernie Pyle.
Right.
But it's kind of late. So I'm wondering, what can we do to really promote this, that the residents alongside the route can see it, can go out, and really celebrate while it passes to their area?
Beginning this, well, beginning this week, we are, there's a big press release going out regarding the escort, regarding the whole event. And then we will also be promoting a lot on our social media and as well as on the city website, specifics, the maps on the website as well for the public to be aware of.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
And then, beginning Wednesday, at 8:30, 25 volunteers will spend six to eight hours assembling the wall, all day. And then from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, all the volunteers that are participating are asked to come to an all-volunteer training if they're able to. If they're not, they'll have handouts when they do arrive for their specific slots for volunteering. Wednesday evening will be considered the soft opening, and the official opening will be at 12:01 AM on Thursday morning. On Thursday, and this, Mayor, this will go to your question regarding the schools. On Wednesday, or Thursday, the wall is open 24 hours a day for visitors, and there will be school educational tours are scheduled from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Bellflower High School is scheduled to bring 500 students. And other schools have been invited as well, and they can register with the Volunteer Center. On Friday as well, we're open 24 hours a day, and there are school educational tours are available from 9:00 to 3:00. On Saturday, the wall is open 24 hours a day for visitors, and then from 11:00 AM to 11:30 AM, there will be a salute-to-service ceremony. And we'll have a Vietnam veteran guest speaker. The mayor will speak. We have reached out to County Board Member Janice Hahn to speak, Supervisor Hahn, as well. There'll be a wreath lane, and there'll be a rifle salute. We have notified all of the neighbors in the area specific to this event and to not be alarmed with different noises and stuff that may be going on with the rifle salute as well. So we have notified them with letters. And then from 11:00 to 2:00, will be a salute-to-service fair. We'll be featuring about a dozen military and veteran service organizations that'll be on the site for informational purposes, and we'll be at that fair. Then on Sunday, again, the wall is open to visitors until 3:00 PM, and then 25 volunteers will spend four to six hours breaking down the wall, beginning at 3:00 PM. And then the wall will depart to its next destination. We are still in need. We have about half of our volunteer slots filled, and we need to, we have about 100 more slots that we need to get filled. So we are actively calling again to the service clubs and different groups. So this gives us an opportunity tonight to also mention that to the public, that they can register to volunteer online, or they can call this extension if they have any more questions regarding volunteering. But there is a lot of information on the website that details the specific shifts that are available, what those are, giving tours, different things that are needed for the event. And then we will also be supplementing for whatever volunteers we don't have, but we do anticipate to get them all, we'll be supplementing with Parks and Recreation staff as well throughout the week. For any information, again, you can go to the city website or call our department, and our extension is 2268. And finally, I just want to recognize and thank all of our sponsors for this event. We, the city, the Costa be a host for this event is $10,000. And we more than exceeded that, and we'll be able to cover every expense we have for this event, including our security, refreshments for the volunteers, anything we need for this event. So it's, we had a really good turnout for sponsors, and we wanted to recognize them all. Supervisor Hahn is our top sponsor, the Kiwanis Club, Kaiser Permanente, CRNR, community supporters as well, Admiral Pest Control, Bee Vermingston Haas, Blacksmith's Corner, Empire Transportation, MGB Services, Mike Bressard, and Seroptimus International. We want to thank them all very much for their support for this, and it's going to be a very special event throughout the week next weekend, and we're excited about it. And that's all I had for this presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments you have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all that you do, and all your staff doing on this project, and it's a wonderful project for the city. So any question for Mr. Milan? Nope? Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. For our next presentation, we have the President of the Suritas College, Mr. Dr. Viera.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time to talk to you this evening. I'd like to introduce Board of Trustees Cory Kirk, the audience. He's a little under the weather. So again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk before you this evening. And I just have a couple of slides, and I want to just thank you for your support and your participation in some of the events of the district. You may not know, but recently, we launched our second year of free tuition, the district, and the program is more than a promise. You know, the California Promise is taking a lot of momentum throughout the state, but most of the programs are based on access to college. We are deciding to focus ours on success and completion. Yes, we do want all of our local students to come to the district and seek an education, but we are providing additional supports to help them complete their education a little faster. Our goal is not just simply to get them to Sarita's College, but to get them to either their career or their transfer institution of choice. So with the partnership with Sarita's College Foundation and the support of the Board of Trustees, we have been able to allocate a little over half a million dollars a year to be able to cover the tuition for these students that are coming to the district. As I said, it's not necessarily free money. It's a merit-based scholarship, if you will. Every student is welcome regardless of their GPA when they finish high school, but they have to commit to do the work at Sarita's College. They have to commit to work with counselors. They have to commit to take math and English during their first semester in order to help them complete their education. So we have implemented, this program is going to be almost four years old, and we have done, well, you know.
Behind you. He's coming to rescue you.
So our graduation rates have increased significantly over the last four years as a result of the program and some of the services, support services that we are providing to our students. So as you can see there, we have increased graduation rate by a little bit over 30% over the last four years. So we started in 2015 with about 2,100 students graduating, or degrees and certificates, and now, on 2018, we reached 3,500 students receiving degrees and certificates. We expect to exceed that number this upcoming May. And all that is based on the community support that we have received and the partnerships that we have been able to build with our school districts, and obviously with the support of the different councils and obviously jurors here. So we just want to invite you to stop by the district, take a tour in our, to our new facilities, and obviously help us to reroute our local graduates to Sarita's College to ensure that they are able to complete their educational pathways on time. And hopefully, the locals, as we know, student loans are increasing dramatically, and we want to do our part to keep them at the minimum. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions. If not, I will appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious, what percentage of your student obtain their associate's degree or earn enough college credit to go to university in two years?
We are nearing 20% now in two years.
20%, okay.
Twenty, twenty, nearing 20% in two years now. Our goal is to get closer to the 30% mark. Our numbers get better the third and fourth year, but we are, with these programs, we're hoping to increase the velocity of completion, so increase the number of students that are graduating between two and three years. So to that end, we have made some modifications to our entrance exams, and now most of our students, more of our local students, place that extend to college-level courses, and some of them require additional support, and we are able to facilitate their additional tutoring hours or limited support to make them successful.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question for Dr. Viera?
No, just a comment. That's a pretty good track record you have there for like, almost 2,000, no, 1,500 students within the four-year span. It's going in the right direction. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So what is the actual amount that these students are not responsible for? What are they saving?
We cover as many credits as they want to take, up to 30 units a year.
So it's 15 units a semester?
Fifteen years, fifteen units a semester. If they are able to do 15, six, 15, and the summer term, we will also cover the summer term.
All right, so what does 15 units usually cost?
With fees, around $1,200.
Okay.
So we will cover-
So it's a $2,400 gift?
Yeah, well, it's thanks to the allocation that the Board of Trustees have done, and some of our local revenue and the partnership with the Sarita's College Foundation. So yes.
That's very generous. Now, how about responsibility for books? That's still upon the student?
We do that on a case-by-case basis. Some of our students receive book vouchers. So what we try to do is partner or help with some of the state and federal help, and try to meet the unmet need of some of our students. So some of our students receive the tuition and books, and some only receive the book vouchers, because we're able to cover the tuition in a different way.
All right, thank you.
Again, just a quick comment. Dr. Viera, thank you for coming. Again, I know that you're very supportive of all the other activities on campus, because I've seen you in action when you have the, you know, talk to a president days and every, and you're out there talking to kids. And again, I just wish this was, I mean, this program was 15 years ago. I can see my wife saying, yeah, I wish, yeah. Yeah, I wish we had, you know, for three kids. And, but so I just want to say, go Falcons! And again, thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
All right, thank you, Dr. Viera. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
All right, the next presentation is an update on the Transit Oriented Development Project by Serrano Development Group. Just for the benefit of the audience, the city has negotiated with Serrano Development, we are writing- we are right now with doing an exclusive negotiating agreement with them to develop the old Greek market. So that's still under development right now in negotiation and they're here to give us an update on that negotiation.
Jason Tolleson from Serrano Development Group is here to provide that update today.
Okay. Jason, good evening.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jason Tolleson with Serrano Development Group. I'm here to give you an update, as you mentioned, on the mixed-use project, immediately adjacent to the new transit station. So we have some materials to present tonight and I'm available for questions afterward. So I'm going to give you a quick update on the project status, basically what we've worked with staff to accomplish over the last six months or so, a little window into what we're thinking in terms of design beyond what was submitted in the initial RFP, and then just answer any questions you might have about the project. So we, as you, as you mentioned, Mayor, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city in October of 2008 with the goal of consummating a development agreement and purchase and sale agreement to move forward with the project. We're in the process of negotiating those agreements alongside which we have completed an extensive array of due diligence studies and architectural studies for the site. There've been several iterations that we've worked in concert with staff to develop and we're, we feel we're honing in here on the final product. So what comes next is wrapping up those purchase and sale and development agreements to memorialize all the business points of the agreement, finalize the conceptual plan, which is very close, and submit to the planning department for approval. We are currently looking at a planning submittal third or fourth quarter this year, kind of depends how quickly we get the agreements finalized and approved by council, which would mean that we're spending the year of 2020 going through entitlements and plan check or approvals to start construction, preparing our construction documents, arranging financing and getting ready to start. And then the project we're saying is a 24, 24-month duration project. Reality is it'll probably be a little bit quicker than that, but we just, we always say that because things come up along the way sometimes that slow things down a little bit despite everybody's best efforts. So that puts a completed project in the first quarter of 2023. Let me give you a little orientation here on the site plan. You're looking at a site plan which shows the three streets that bound the project, Bellflower Boulevard, Main Street and Oak Street, approximately 1.1 acre site. We're proposing in the back, two-thirds of the lot, 81 apartment units, mixture of one and two bedrooms, parked, as you can see, two stalls per two-bedroom and one per one-bedroom, a couple of guest spots off the alley. We're looking at doing a pedestrian passeo between the back two-thirds project and the front, which is the existing Greek market, looking to repurpose that building for a Lemley Art House Theater and some retail fronting on Bellflower Boulevard. You'll also make, you also may notice that the, the frontage on Bellflower Boulevard has a wider sidewalk than currently exists there today. So the idea there is a colonnade where the, the original facade of the building is maintained, but the storefront is pulled back about 10 feet. So it's really kind of like a covered walkway, making for a much nicer pedestrian experience. Along the same lines, we were talking about closing down the alley between the apartment building and the backside of the theater with enhanced hardscape and overhead lights to make that...
Jason, can you use the pointer?
I'm sorry.
So...
I didn't realize I had this here. Okay, that makes it a little easier. So this, this area here I'm talking about, pedestrian walkway with overhead lights, the colonnade I was talking about is up on the front here. And then this, this corner is open to the sky, a public gathering space on the northeast corner of the site. The north side of the apartment project has got retail or this is a sort of a bike repair shop to align with the transit goals of the station and the parking lot right across the street. And then we have two lobbies. And really the purpose of that is this is sort of an access lobby for people to have easy access to the transit station. And this lobby down here is where we're going to have the mailroom and leasing office and it's kind of the main entrance. So let me give you some precedent imagery here. The upper left images here give some examples of what a colonnade could look like. So right now, the current sidewalk is really just the curb to the front face of this column. So we're widening it substantially for the, for the benefit of the pedestrian experience. And then in the back, behind the theater, something more like this that you'd see. Another element that's still being discussed with planning are the parklets, which are these kind of outdoor seating areas, and I'll flip back to that real quick, which would go somewhere around here. So it would kind of engage the street a little bit more. We're just, we're still evaluating the feasibility of those. We want to make sure that there is a room, but I think it could be a nice design element. Here's some renderings. This is looking to the southwest on the corner of Bellflower and Main. You see the Lemley Theater there, kind of right front and center, like we've done with Lemley and other projects. The goal here is that we really maximize the benefit of the foot traffic generated by the theater for the other retailers and then the other, you know, surrounding purposes. So the parking for the, the commercial will, is currently proposed to be off-site, which is by design and encourages people to park and walk around in the district rather than just, you know, park right in front of the stores and go in and come out. So I think that'll be a very positive impact to the neighborhood. And then this is just kind of circling down Bellflower, rotating to the, to the right, to the, to the west a little bit. So you can see, you know, this is the existing facade of the Greek market, but it will be completely redone with, with new facades and new architectural elements so that it feels, you know, like three, really three new buildings. This is going to all be open glass and this will be completely repurposed. We maintain the, the spire that says Lemley to, to ensure visibility from both directions on Bellflower Boulevard is kind of the marquee of the project and then, and then separate signage for the retailers fronting on Bellflower. And then this just moving a little further down Bellflower Boulevard, rotating further to the north. You can see in the background the apartment project over the top of the, the retail project and then just get, you get a little bit better view of the colonnade. These are the parklets I was describing in, in the earlier slide. So you can see that a little bit better there. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you might have about the project or anything else you'd like to discuss.
Okay, can you go back to the, the timeline, Jason?
Sure.
There you go. Okay, so you're, you're aware that we have a self-certification for plan check?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Very excited to try that, by the way.
So is that factored in already?
Yeah, because we still have the same duration to prepare our plans. We don't have the, the waiting period of plan check, which you're right, can be very time-consuming. We would probably still do some kind of a peer review just to make sure that everything is good before we start putting shovels in the ground.
You don't want to take the chance, huh?
We don't have the security blanket of the plan checker, which is a little foreign, but it's a, I'm very curious to...
So it's new to you?
It's new to us, yes.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a wonderful concept and I think, you know, makes a lot of sense. So we're excited to do it.
You learn something new.
That's right, yeah.
Very good. And the other, the other thing is, what, what percent of the Greek market will stay of the building itself?
The, the entire front building. So there, right now there are two, two structures, one back here, it's kind of like a warehouse and the other one basically matches the footprint of this box right here. So right now, the front of the Greek market is out here along the existing sidewalk. And we're talking about pulling the storefront back 10 feet, so it actually sits back here. And then this area right here is going to be covered, a covered colonnade. But the, the, these three walls of the existing building and the entire roof will be reused. You might imagine there's significant structural retrofits that need to go into it because it's unreinforced brick, but we have done some testing, some coring of the existing building and we're convinced that we can reuse most of it.
Okay. So, so far you're confident that the, the buildings will hold and there's no, there won't be any kind of surprises for you?
Right, yeah, that's, this is, I think we're 90% of the way there with the concept. So I'm very comfortable that we're going to be able to use, reuse this front building and very comfortable that this concept in the back is going to work for us from an economic standpoint.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we're, you know, we're down to the fine-tuning now, which is kind of think, things sort of like, you know, where exactly the lobby goes and where the elevator and stairs are going to be, those kinds of things. And I did, it didn't include it in this package, but on top of this level right here, this is a podium project. So this level is all made out of concrete and then we're going to have three stories of what we call stick framing on top of that. And so there'll be some amenities for the residents, a gym and a business center and a pool and, and some other things, just for the residents and then, and then the stuff that you see here on site.
Okay, okay, very good. Any question for Jason?
No.
Yes.
Councilmember Coops?
Mayor Sandy Nez, myself and Council, Mayor Potem Garza toured what it is that you're presenting now in Glendale and several other places. And I just wanted to convey how excited we were after having saw what you presented, that this could be put on the Boulevard. Put back up that picture, which is really the corner there. Now, those in the audience probably have never seen this before, but that's Thompson's Furniture. Let's put it in respect. So Sally, you know what we're talking about here. And so you can see how that whole complexion will change there on the corner of something that'll totally make a difference as you enter into Bellflower. The idea that they would come to our city because the train is coming, that's the basis for them arriving. They believe that, how many people do you think is going to, are, will be getting off the train there to be a part of that community and to...
A lot, I don't know exactly, but a lot, yeah.
But it's impressive. They wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the train that we know is coming.
Yeah.
And it's exciting to think that we are going to have something that no one else in the area is going to have because we still have a Bellflower Boulevard. There's nothing like this in Lakewood, there's nothing like this in Downey, there's nothing like this in Artesia, Sarita's, because we've gone back to the basis where Bellflower first started, which was the first building there. Thompson's Hardware and Furniture, we're coming back 100 years later to where it all began. And Tenth General Store, we'll go back to, I think they traded with the Indians there.
Yeah.
Right. But when we saw what this company and development organization could bring to our town, and they came to us, we, and we're continuing the, the conversation to try to complete this, it's really exciting. So what we'll have across the street, you saw our new event center, the Fire Museum. Just beyond that, Steel Craft is, should be finished here in the next 30 to 60 days. Parking garage, we're going to break ground for that, Mr. Mayor, on Friday if weather permits.
Weather permits, yes.
And so this is going to be a really impressive structure, structures. Sunny and I had never been in an apartment building like this where they had a dog wash. And that was an interesting concept and I expect you might have a dog wash here.
We're having one here, yes, yes, we are, actually.
But no, it's something very, very special and I think that picture is what tells what the future of our downtown will be like. And so that's all I have.
I just want to say too, you know, one of the things we look for when we come into communities is, it's, you know, the train, yes, is important, but also it's supportive infrastructure. And the council staff have done a wonderful job bringing good retail to the district, but also, you know, just the physical infrastructure. So that's the museum, the parking structure, nice clean streets and a vibrant retail district. So we're, we're very excited to be here and have very high expectations for the project as well.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one other thing.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, could you put the picture up depicting the Bellflower Boulevard frontage? Or maybe, yeah, now, the pointer here, if I can get this to go. All right, so over here, this being of course Bellflower Boulevard, and this is what we just shown on the real, on the corner there, on that hard corner. The, the current building, which you've said something about unreinforced brick, you know that building is not that old, that, that was built in like the mid-'90s. There was an old building there, it was from 1910. And once they started to work on that, they took the whole thing down and began again. So you're starting with a good framework.
Yeah.
But anyway, this here, now that would be where the movie theaters would go?
No.
Right here.
I'm sorry, yeah, so the auditoriums are these boxes here, you can see the seats in them. So these are the two big house auditoriums, and those hold about 100 people. And the small auditoriums have 49 seats because that's the max you can put in without two exits.
Right, so it'd be four auditoriums for movie viewing, correct?
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
So you see, we've got movie theater coming back to Bellflower Boulevard. We haven't had that since the New Bell, the holiday. Right, well. But anyway, so that's what will be involved here. And then we'd have the retail across the back here and retail along the front here. So there's many components to this, all of which will be a promote the walking idea on Bellflower Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Just, just to add to how we got here, a little bit of tidbit here, we solicited proposals from about five or six companies, developers, is that right?
Well, we put it out for, that's how many we received.
So we received about five proposals and, and quite interestingly, staff and city council in, individually, independently rank Serrano as number one. So it was, it was, it was a slam dunk for all of us, so, because the proposal was really the best that, that we can, we can get for that, for that site, so.
Thank you.
So hopefully we can finish this, we can complete the negotiation and hopefully we can start, start with the project.
Yes, that's our plan.
All right, very good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amada, go ahead.
Just a couple comments. Again, again, being the new guy on the block, so I didn't get in on the earlier part of the discussions, but again, this is exciting. And then the L'Amalay Theaters, you know, that, it's a, it's a specialty...
Right.
...type of theater, so. And, you know, with some of the, you know, the specialized cultural and all the, those types of films. Now, with it being in like Pasadena, right, you're in Pasadena, Glendale, Santa Monica?
Yeah, they have, I think, seven theaters. We're building one up in Santa Clarita. They've got two in Santa Monica, Pasadena, Glendale, North Hollywood, and Claremont.
Yeah, I mean, with the L'Amalay, it seems to bring a, a good crowd of a certain type, probably. I wouldn't say more cultured, but, but have you been marketing the retail, saying that it's going to go with a L'Amalay?
We will, yeah, when we get to that. And it really helps with the leasing because it drives so much foot traffic. And for those who aren't familiar with Lemley, you're right, it's an art house movie theater operator. So they do mainly foreign and independent films, but Greg Lemley will personally curate the, the films for the market. And so if you go to a, an area like Pasadena, you may have a different type of movie collection than you do in Claremont or North Hollywood. And it just, you know, he will see what the market responds to, but their core business is art house movie theaters. And, and I think the, the, the main driver for the success of the theater is picking the right films for the community. And so, yeah, I think that's how they go about it. And it's a catalyst for us to drive foot traffic for retail and it really even helps the residential as an amenity. So this will be our fourth project with Lemley. You know, the prior three have all been very successful and it's a really good anchor to have for the project and for the district.
You had mentioned the parklets and I think, first time I saw a parklet was out in Venice. And, and that wasn't that long ago, so, and seeing how they work and, yeah, and I think you're probably seeing it, yes, maybe some pros and cons.
For sure.
Likely take a lane, I mean, if there's, but more likely take the parking spot, of course, rather than a lane.
I think the concept in that, you're right, that sometimes they do put them out in the parking stalls. In this case, the concept is we put them just inside of the backside of the curb.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of sitting where the existing sidewalk is.
More of an outdoor...
Yeah, because we're, we're sort of building a new sidewalk, if you will, to the, to the left here of the existing sidewalk, is really what the colonnade is. And then what's now existing sidewalk could then be replaced with what's effectively outdoor seating for the retailers or a public gathering place.
Okay.
It's a concept that still needs to be kind of vetted further with staff, but it's, we think it could be an interesting way to kind of, you know, break up the, the busy traffic from the more hopefully intimate retail experience.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that in my mind, see, rather, okay, rather than a projection into the street...
Right, correct.
It's more of a just extension of the building into the, into the sidewalk area.
Correct, that's the idea.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Just one point, in terms of location, correct, we went wrong, there's no limiter out south of the 10 freeway, correct? Okay.
Correct.
So in terms of the market, I think...
It's wide open.
It's wide open, Orange County, Long Beach and...
That's right, yeah.
All right, very good.
I've got one more thing I want to...
Yes, Mr. White?
When, I'm excited about this project, as you can see. When, I'm excited about this project, as you can see. But the fact that, when you talk about the theaters that are gonna be part of this project, the way it was, Mr. Lemalet explained it to us, was that they show these movies, maybe for the first or second time, and many times, the producers, the directors, many of the actors come to these movie showings. And so they play the movie for those that know that it's going to be there. And then they take questions and answers as to how the movie was depicted, how they did certain things. And so there's a whole clientele of people in the area that look for that interaction with those that make these movies. And that's gonna be part of our deal. Some of those theaters have but 50 spaces, and the deal there is, you don't have to have two exits if you have 50 or less, 49 or less. And so they're one way in and one way out, that's cool. But if you go over to 51, then you gotta have more exposure to people traveling in and out. But this arthouse theater, it's, so they're not gonna be playing Smokey and the Bandit there, but they're gonna be playing movies that will be a little more cultural, that will draw people in the area, that will interact with those that have made the movie. And I, it's, again, that's something never been part of our community or any community around us.
Yeah, it's really neat, what they do is really neat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, we look forward to working with you.
I'll be back, thank you.
All right, please. All right, next item, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray.
Good evening, Josh.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Brackenseek Library, 9945 Flower Street. I'd like to invite everybody in the community to come to our free jewelry-making workshop this Saturday, March 16th, 2019, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Come learn how to make your own customized jewelry, and this is for ages 18 and up. And it is a free event at Brackenseek Library this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple items that I hope you're still working on this Union Bank parking lot situation. I'd like to see that move along quicker and come to a head. The other thing is, I know, well, I shouldn't say I know, but I hope you're working on this business license thing that I've been beating on for two years, that needs to finally come to a head. And then a couple of other things is, driving around town here the last couple of days, I question my own mind on where all these homeless are coming from. I think they're being dropped off here from other entities. And when you look at the demographics of what I'm seeing, it's shocking. I'm seeing more African-American on these streets and stuff than anything else. But I'm seeing a lot more homeless that I've never, of different faces that I've never seen before. So I'm just wondering whether our fabulous police entities in these different cities are figuring here, instead of a bus ticket to Florida, here, we'll just give you a little transit ticket to Bellflower. But when you look at it, and with this gentleman that was presenting this item here for downtown, I hope you're after Janice Hawn to cut loose with some of that money she claims she has, that she's gonna double out for taking care of some of this homeless situation. I know you do have an idea on how to do certain things, and that you have to meet certain requirements to do it, and I'm all for what I've been hearing about on it. And this is such a desperate thing, that I would like to see that at least moves along quicker and somehow, even if you gotta embarrass the city of LA down there, Garcetti and the rest of the idiots. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a public hearing, it's consideration of possible action, conduct public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendment, case number ZODA 19-01, a Bellflower Municipal Code VMC amendment to Chapter 17.48, Town Center District, and read by title only. Wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1373. An ordinance amending Chapter 17.48 of the Bellflower Municipal Code to dissolve the Town Center Design Review Committee and to eliminate the application or review procedures for projects requiring Town Center Design Review Committee approval. And we have our not-so-new planning director anymore, Beth, here to make the presentation.
I'm Ms. Corpus.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The mayor gave you a brief outline of what the Town Center Design Review Committee did earlier during the presentations, so I'll just go through a brief background with you. In May of 1996, the Town Center District was established, and part of the formation of the district was the Town Center Design Review Committee. The purpose of the Design Review Committee was to review all development projects or rehabilitation projects, to make sure they were in compliance with the code and also with our Town Center Design Review Guidelines. In September of 2014, ordinance 1281 was adopted. This was to amend the municipal code to narrow the types of projects that were subject to the Development Town Center Design Review Committee. And that was to help streamline the process and also to have business owners put up signs or paint their building without much review, except for staff. In January of 2019, or I should mention that since 2014, no development projects have been reviewed by the Town Center Design Review Committee. And in January 2019, when the council was considering its appointments to various commissions and committees, including the Town Center, it was also discussed that the Town Center Design Review Committee hadn't met in years, and directed staff to come back with an agenda item to dissolve the TC DRC. And in February of 2019, the Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance number The proposed ordinance would eliminate in its entirety the Town Center Design Review process. This results in the dissolution of the Town Center Design Review Committee. Projects that would be, development projects in the Town Center would then be subject to development review, which is a staff-level review. The development review still achieves the same purpose and intent of the Town Center Design Review Committee, and that process would also ensure that all the design guidelines are met within the Town Center District. The recommendation tonight is to open the hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number 1373, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you for your presentation, it was very clear. Any question for Ms. Corpus?
Move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to open the public hearing.
Not seeing anybody, I'd move we close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1373, and wait for, wait for the reading.
Second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to introduce ordinance number 13-73. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Santiness?
Aye. We don't have any ordinances and resolutions for consideration, so we're moving on to item 13A. Mr. Stewart.
This item and the item after it were both subcommittees, a City Charter Ad Hoc Subcommittee and a Revenue Ad Hoc Subcommittee. The Subcommittee members were selected by the City Council previous meeting. The Subcommittee members met subsequent to that meeting and selected names. And before you on each item, they have listed names that they would like to point into this Subcommittee. Of all the people that have been nominated have been notified, and all have accepted and expressed interest in serving on the committee. And if there are no changes from the City Council from the dais tonight, staff would recommend that you approve the names listed on the staff report for inclusion in both of these subcommittees, the Charter Ad Hoc Subcommittee and the Revenue Ad Hoc Subcommittee, which is 13B.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Stewart on item 13A and B, right? We're doing together?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I participated on the 13A item, that's, that's, again, for the Charter City Subcommittee. And again, both the Mayor Portem and I shared our list of individuals and had a discussion, and we, we looked for a good balance of backgrounds. And, and you can name the characteristic or the background, and I think we've, we've covered a good amount of, of territory, so to speak. And it's, I think it's a, it's a great list of individuals, and I know there'll be some, some good dialogue, and I think we'll get, get the Charter City discussion moving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dutton and I are the members of the Revenue Ad Hoc Committee from the City Council, and we came up with this list of names, and we thought that this is a broad, a cross-section of the city, in terms of what they can bring into the table. And I just, one thing that really stood out is that all the, all the members of the committee are very enthusiastic in terms of what they would contribute into this project. And I look forward to working with this committee. I think we're gonna come up with good results that we can present to our, our residents. Okay, any, any public comments? None? Okay, we're doing well.
I got a, I got a question to the City Attorney, if I could, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If one of the committees that needed to replace anybody or add anybody, does it have to come back here to the council for a motion to do that? Or could we put some verbiage in here in case that happens, that we can fast-track it so we don't have to come back?
You could name an alternate if you'd like. Or you could add somebody on the committee chair call.
Gotcha, okay.
To handle that, I would just authorize the chairperson that's selected by each committee to appoint, appoint somebody.
Okay, that makes it easier.
With the concurrence of the committee? Okay. Should we add that verbiage now? Because one thing is, I don't like the concept of alternates.
Yeah.
Because it's just like an alternate juror, I just have a bad experience with alternate juror. You sit there the whole time without doing anything.
Have you been, have you been an alternate mayor?
If, if the City Council just puts it into the, into the record as part of the minute order, that should be sufficient. So authorize the chairperson to appoint a replacement with the concurrence.
With the concurrence of the committee, okay.
Or if we felt it needed, there needed to be an addition to do that, too.
Okay, so can we add it now? Okay. All right, good. Good point.
With that, I like, can I do both of them at once, Mr. Attorney? I'd like to make a motion for consideration item A and B.
Second.
As amended.
Sorry, second.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, to approve consideration items 13A and B as amended. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Santiness?
Aye. All right, we're doing well. Item 14, consent calendar. Any recusals, anyone wants to pull an item?
Let me get my recusal seat here. I need to recuse myself from just one item, 14I, because I have a property conflict with 500 feet of that item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, um...
Councilmember Hamada?
Just trying to find which one I had tagged. It's one with Len, so. Just a, just a, just a question, Len, but, oh, I'm sorry, it's 14J.
Oh, 14J, okay. Okay, any, anyone else, anything else?
I'd like to pull 14E, Mr. Mayor.
14E? That's on the kiosk.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Would that be a possible separate vote, or?
No, I just have a question.
Question, okay. All right, and I'd like to pull item 14D for, just for discussion.
14D or B?
No, D.
D, okay.
The web.
The web, I just wanna make a comment on that.
Okay.
And then, okay, so we're good.
Okay.
All right, let's start with 14, 14J.
14J, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here, Len, thank you. Just a, Len, maybe for the benefit of the audience and the public, what is this ATP? And there was a reference to Exhibit A, the completion of work, and I was just, that's a, that's what I was hoping, I, I didn't see that, so I just wanted to get an idea of what this actual plan was going to, to entail.
Yeah, just briefly, the ATP or what's more commonly referred to as the Active Transportation Plan. Essentially, it's a consolidation of several different types of plans that cities have been putting together for several years. For instance, one city may have a Bike Master Plan, another city may have a Sidewalk or an ADA Transition Plan. And essentially, the Active Transportation Plan is the document that unifies all these single plans into one. And the unification of all these plans into one general plan allows a city to go after more grant funding and different, various state, federal, and regional levels. So when you have a, a street plan, or say we're gonna look at redoing one of our arterial streets, Alondra Boulevard, when you apply for different, some of the different funding sources out there, you know, grants that are available to do work like that, one of the first questions right off the bat is, does the city have an active transportation plan? And it's real simple, if you do, then you go into the primary pile. If you don't have one, then you go into the secondary pile. And so we're just kind of trying to stay up with the times. There was a, a small grant of $100,000 that was put out there to develop an active transportation plan. We partnered with the city of Paramount next door, mainly because we share these, the same bike route. Where we're completely done here in Bellflower, Paramount's not all the way done with theirs. We had a lot of the, some of the plans put into place already. Paramount's doing a lot of theirs, starting a lot of theirs from scratch, but in, it's basically, it's a, it's a unification of all those plans between our two communities and stuff, which then in turn allows us to show that we've put together a, a regional effort, meaning it's just more than our city looking at funding sources, which again, helps you rate out higher when you go in front of the, the different boards that rate out grant applications and stuff. So in a nutshell, we're unifying a bunch of our programs, so we look better when we submit grant applications. And it's kind of the way it's done now.
No, that's, that's a good plan, 'cause again, whenever I hear the word "transportation" now, 'cause I'm the, apparently the new, new member of the Gateway Cogs, designated to the SCAG policy.
Actually, you're a member of the SCAG.
Yeah, wherever it goes.
It's a, it's a higher level.
Yeah, okay, SCAG. But yeah, through the COG, so. But thank you, Len.
Yes.
For that day.
And then currently, just so you know, we received the draft from the... And then currently, just so you know, we received the draft from the consultant that put the, that put the document together on behalf of Bellflower and Paramount. We just received the, the final draft last week. We're reviewing that right now and hopefully we'll bring that before the council here in April for final approval and have it implemented. So when we start the next fiscal year, we'll have this new weapon in our arsenal to help us get additional grant funds.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that's a good segue to my question, because I want to pull this item, too. So what is the end game of this plan? What are we trying to, so are we trying to set a kind of a shovel-ready project so that when, when proposals are being sought by funders later on, we're ready to go?
No, I mean, this wouldn't be considered shovel-ready. Shovel-ready is when you actually have a, a design and specification done. Again, using the arterial example, shovel-ready would mean, I already have that street designed out on paper.
So what's the final outcome of this project?
This, it, it's, it essentially just helps us when we apply for grants in the future. Where it's a requirement now for a lot of the grant applications. If we opted not to do it, we would, almost every time we submit for grant, we would be put in the secondary pile. We most likely wouldn't even be considered before the fundee ran out for said grant.
Okay, so it's basically the plan is the end product?
The plan is the end product.
End product, okay.
Statement of ideology, saying that you concur with the, the goals of the state, that's the grand agency for most of these items.
It's like another tool in the toolbox.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Is this the plan that, that we, this council has been so impressed with the last two presentations?
No.
It's a different one?
Different one.
Okay. They said bike, they said Paramount and Bike Trail. I had to think it was that one.
Don't go, don't go there, okay?
It was a memorable evening.
Okay, good.
Good.
Any other question for Mr. Gureki? Nope, all right, next item, fourteen E.
All right.
Mr. Coops?
Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Delonga, the, the kiosk that we're talking about here, the potential Lisi says that we'll sell used books, book accessories, bookmarks, pens, totes, and can to sit, continue to sell via e-commerce website. She also plans to expand retail sales to include unique collectibles, wall art, and vintage media. I got it right?
You got it right.
All right, so when we have a new business on the boulevard, doesn't the code exempt or does now allow the sale of used items on the boulevard? And my concern is not for what this potential project is, but if someone were to look at that and say, listen, they're selling used books and used bookmarks and unique collectibles on the boulevard, why can't I sell used mattresses, used furniture, and, you know, those kinds of items? What would keep us from having to allow others to do the same?
Good question. I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to refer to the planning director if she could help me out with that one, as that's a zoning code issue. But she is selling new stuff as well, so it's not a complete secondhand store.
No, but I, anybody can do that. I could put in one new washer in the window and have thirty used ones next to it. Now, I can say I'm a new appliance dealer, but let's be real here, you know, we're selling used appliances.
Let's just table it the next meeting, we'll research it.
You understand my concern. I don't mind this little.
No, it's a good question.
Kiosk, but I don't want to open Pandora's box.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't know the answer myself, but it's a good question, and I think it's best off now rather than speculate. Let's just pull the item, bring it back next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're pulling item fourteen E?
Yep.
Okay. Fourteen D, I have no question, just somebody make, make a comment on fourteen D. Fourteen D is, is a resolution supporting the, the desire of the city of Paramount to join the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. Workforce Development Board in Southeast Los Angeles County is comprised of the cities of Artesia, Bellflower, Cervitos, Downey, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, and Norwalk. There are seven cities. And it's, it's, it's doing a wonderful job in terms of creating jobs, finding jobs for job seekers, and also providing job training. And over the years, Paramount has tried to, to join this, the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, but about twelve years ago, they petitioned the county to transfer to us, to the Southeast Los Angeles County. And in the process, they were given a, a sweetener, so to speak, to set up a, an office in, near Paramount. So they changed their mind, they stayed with the county, and since then, they have been very unhappy with the service provided by the county, and so they're trying to join us again, knowing that we provide a very good service. So we're entertaining the idea, and in fact, two weeks ago, I was at the city council meeting in Paramount to, to express the support of the Workforce Development Board for their transfer, and they, they voted to, to transfer. So this, this resolution now is basically to our city of Bellflower, supporting their, their transfer to the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. And it, it's a great, it's a great move for, for them, especially for the residents of the city of Paramount, because now they don't have, once they join the Southeast Los Angeles County, the residents will be going to Cervitos for job training and on so on and so forth, instead of going to Huntington Park, which is quite a distance, about twenty miles from, from Paramount. And the other advantage for Paramount is they will have seats at the table, because for the Workforce Development Board, a city council member from Paramount will be appointed member of the policy board, which I'm the member representing the city of Bellflower. In addition to that, there's also the Workforce Development Board comprised of business people in the community. And in our city, we have two representatives, Aaron Drake and Larry Wehage. So the city of Paramount, once they join the Selaco, Los Angeles, Southeast Los Angeles County Development Board, they will also have additional seats, two seats of the business people into the Workforce Development Board. So there is a lot of representation, and it's one, that's one big advantage for them. And quite interestingly, because we are operating as a Workforce Development Board regionally, we've been serving some residents of Paramount already. And I look at the numbers today, I asked for the numbers, we've been serving between twenty and thirty of the residents a year already. And unfortunately, because they're not part of our development, development board, the funding doesn't come to us. But once they become a member of our Workforce Development Board, the whole funding allocated to the city of Paramount will go to this Southeast Los Angeles County. So what's the benefit for our region? It becomes beneficial because once Paramount joins the Southeast Los Angeles County Development Board, we will have now a population of over half a million people in the region. And why is it important also for us? Then we become, we become one of the big players in terms of the Workforce Development Board, in terms of applying for funding and so on and so forth. So we're one of the big players. And, and fortunately, the Workforce Development in Los Angeles, Southeast, Los Angeles County is one of the high-performing boards in, in the, in the state. So we are qualified to, to take advantage of a lot of the grants and funding available out there. So I just want to kind of emphasize that this resolution is, is a win for all, is a win for the residents of Paramount, it's a win for our regional collaboration. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar noting two items? The item fourteen E is being pulled, and councilmember Ray Dutton is recusing himself on item fourteen I.
I'll, I'll make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Coops to adopt the consent calendar. And without objection, that will be the order. All right, we are now in the final stretch, council reports. Councilmember Coops?
Well, we've had an interesting week in Bellflower. Just set the stage here. You know, I've been in business forty years in Bellflower, I've been a retailer for fifty, and this is the first week in my entire time of ever doing business in Bellflower where I had to shut my store down all week because I had no phone service. Frontier Phone Company lost service in our town for many of their users, starting Monday afternoon, and it was not restored until Saturday night. I sent all my help home and locked up the store because I had no phone service in or out. And it's just totally unacceptable. Now, I can get it if we had a national, I mean, a catastrophe of natural, an earthquake, you know, a fire, a tornado, you know, a national, a calamity, a natural calamity. But this is a mechanical problem. The landline to our fire station and to our sheriff's station was dead. You get that? We had no phone service. Two important aspects of our city life here, for our safety. Now, Mr. Dutton, he has the same beautiful service.
Along with fifty other businesses, probably, I'm sure.
No, and it's, it's, it's just unacceptable to think that we were at the mercy of this phone company, and there's no, you call them up and they say, we'll be there Friday. No, no dang well, nobody showed up on Friday. Nobody showed up Saturday, but suddenly they flipped a switch somewhere and we're all back restored again. But that's my council comments. It's, it's wrong to shut down a city of the users of the Frontier Phone. And we're all just held hostage. You can, I guess, change a provider, but there's really nothing the city could do. We just sit there and say, oh, well. But it costs the city a fortune in lost revenues, sales tax, all the things that go with businesses that were interrupted during the last week. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Dutton?
You're a nice man, Mr. Coops. How did you say all that without any derogatory or cuss words? You must win one happy man this morning having phones.
Well, now I'm backed up, you know? Everybody's, now they're on my case, where were you last week? Like I went on a trip, you know?
It wasn't so bad as this, they wouldn't tell you what was wrong. We've had servicemen come by and they say, yeah, it's the main switching station, and then it started leaking out while people were gone. You can't get a service guy till Friday, and I kept hearing that, oh, you're not gonna be fixed Friday. Five o'clock on Friday, I tested the phone system and it worked. No call, no nothing, no, you know, it's funny, I was out, the week before, I was, my, my internet was down for three days. But we gotta, you know, they wanted, they send you a, a response, email response, how'd we do? They didn't do very good on the internet, but it's kind of funny that this time, there was no survey, how'd we do this time? But they were, they couldn't wait to get it out last time. But with that, we're gonna move on, life goes on. There's a lot of other things to live for than a bad week of business. I've never had that before, but now I can cross that off the list. But with that, there's a lot of positive things going here on the city, a lot of construction going on, a lot of exciting things, a lot of things that this town and this city started many, many years ago. And all I can say is it's gonna be an exciting summer to watch this stuff come to a trition. So with that, I'd like to welcome everybody into the daylight savings time, because it's sure night's getting dark at seven. And with that, it's back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me follow with some more positive. On February twenty-eighth, I had the pleasure to attend the ICSC Ideas Exchange Event. First want to congratulate Jim, you know, Delonga and his team for being there to market our, our town. I was there just hopefully to add, you know, some assurance to some of the contacts that, you know, council is ready to listen and open, and hopefully they can take a look at Bellflower. So I was there hopefully planting some seeds and, but, but, you know, also promoting Bellflower. And, you know, I was able to see some of my old developer contacts and real estate people, so, so I was able to, it was a plus there, too. Just on the last week, I was able to, to attend the City Ventures Open House, again with staff. And again, I think they've come up with another great product, and I think there's some quality commercial that's available now on, on, on Artesia there, and I heard that, I think most of the residential units have been sold, so, so that's a big positive for Bellflower, On the seventh, I, I was able to attend the League of California Cities General Membership Meeting with the Mayor Pro Tem, and we heard the Director of the State Department of Conservation, so he was there to tell everybody that there's resources out there, tools that cities can monitor, you know, disasters and hazards, and they have a, they have a wealth of information that, again, cities can use to, to, you know, develop studies and then also analyze future hazards. Also, let's see, also on the seventh, before I went to the league, I, I was able to join in on a, a webinar on Measure H. And again, the money that's coming down for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year is four hundred and sixty big ones, so. They tried to, you know, divide it up in all these strategies, it's a big laundry list kind of thing, and I just wanted to point out that it's now, they're now in the public hearing process, and they would like to receive public comments by March twentieth. If you'd like to provide comments, it, it would be the homeless initiative website, that'd be homeless dot, that's ALBcounty.gov, and that's by March twentieth. On the ninth here, this past Saturday, I enjoyed breakfast with my wife at one of our favorite breakfast joints in town, and that's The Nest. Okay, Antonio, I first want to congratulate, you know, Antonio for starting up in Bellflower and now being here five years. So it was, and just, again, want to say, go Nest Nation, because he's got quite a following, and it was very busy, and didn't have to wait long. I, I waited. I didn't, so we waited probably, you know, at least thirty minutes, so. So it was, it was nice to see and everybody, you know, again, he's doing a great job there, and he's just bringing, again, a lot, a lot more new faces to Bellflowers, so. Again, I've mentioned some of the other things, I, I'm now on the SCAG Committee, so that's something I'll be participating in, and, oh, I'm sorry, at the League of California Cities event, just wanted to mention that the Mayor Pro Tem was elected president of, of, of the Los Angeles County Division, so. So congratulate, to Juan, congratulations. And he's looking forward to a very active year, and I think he's, he's gonna be on top of things, and yeah, there's gonna, I think, a lot of, a lot of activity that cities will be involved with, to deal with. So I think we're in good hands with Juan there, leading the local area, so. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speaking of that, he was elevated.
Elevated, yes. He's been, yeah.
But you're still gonna seek a full term in January?
Yeah, he's still, yeah.
All right.
There was some, yeah.
Well...
Current president.
The president did not continue on.
Yeah.
All right, very good. That's it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank our residents for trying, for trying to avoid the construction area on Bellflower Boulevard between Artesia Freeway and the Artesia Boulevard. So I was expecting a lot of traffic, but based on my experience, it's not too bad, so please continue avoiding that area as much as you could. Secondly, on March first, I was invited by the first graders of St. Dominic Savio to read a book for them by Dr. Seuss, who celebrated his birthday last Saturday. So it was, it was a fun reading for the kids of St. Dominic Savio School. And on March eighth, I attended the, the Women of the Year Celebration for the fifty-eighth District, and our very own Barbara Winkler was recognized as the Woman of the Year for Bellflower. Barbara is the founder of Quits for Valor, and their objective is to make quilts for veterans. And since two thousand and five, they have donated fifty-two hundred quilts already to our veterans, so kudos to, to Barbara and, and the Quilts for Valor. And on a sad note, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of retired, of our former city planning commissioner, retired Colonel John Blaisdell Naulyn. Retired Colonel John Naulyn was born on November twenty-fifth, nineteen thirty-seven in Orange, California, and passed away on January fifteen, two thousand nineteen, at the age of eighty-one. John was the first of four children born to Oscar Naulyn and Dorothy Odessa. John's family... John's family moved from California to Oregon, where his father was taking additional training in the Army. When his dad went to serve his country in World War II, his family moved to Illinois and then later moved to Kansas. John joined the Kansas National Guard while in high school, and went on to join the Reserve Officer Candidate School at the University of Kansas, from which he graduated in nineteen sixty. Upon graduation from Kansas University, John entered active duty service in the US Army as an officer. He served with distinction for twenty-eight years. After John completed his military service, he moved back to California and worked with the council on various state projects. John served on the Bellflower Planning Commission from nineteen, from April two thousand fifteen to the date his passing, recently serving as Commissioner's Chair in two thousand eighteen. And I can tell you that, it is my honor to appoint John to the Planning Commission, and when we talk about his appointment, one of his questions is, in terms of how the voting comes to the Planning Commission, I told him, John, vote with your conscience and vote what you think is the best for the city. What I really liked with John is, when there are major things, major issues that come before the Planning Commission, he would call me after the vote and kind of talk to me how the meeting went along. So it was, it was good information for me in terms of what's going on with the Planning Commission. John survived his wife Leah, two sons Jonathan and Stephen, and two brothers Stuart and David, a sister Mary, stepdaughter Sandy, stepson Randy, and four grandchildren. Services will be held on Friday, March twenty-second, at eleven AM at the Riverside National Cemetery in Riverside, where John will be laid to rest with full military honors. And in addition to that, a memorial open house will be held in John's honor at Progress Plaza at fifteen hundred Downey Avenue in the city of Paramount, from one to four PM on Saturday, March twenty-third. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go to our, to the entire Naulyn family. So with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of John Naulyn to the next City of Bellflower Council Meeting at five-thirty PM on Monday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. This meeting is adjourned.
Hi, how are you? How was good evening, guys?
Good, thank you.
I like that project.
Great.